September fifteenth, 2016, 7:00 PM. If y'all would please join me for the prayer and pledge. Please bow. Dear Heavenly Father, I'd like to thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for allowing us to come together and discuss the business of the people. Thank you for allowing us to live in such a wonderful community with the best schools and the best administration and teachers. Please be with us as we go forward tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Got a first? Can I get a second?
Second.
Mayor, I'd like to remove item 10A from the agenda.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Third item on the agenda is citizens' comments.
Mayor, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Okay, thank you. Fourth item on the agenda is the Be Nice Proclamation. So I'd love to invite our principals from the elementary schools and middle school and high school to come up and join us. Brandy, they did request a picture, so if you don't mind, hang on, I can give you... Oh, wait.
You need those? Hey, how are you? I'm doing well. I'm Shannon Crutcher. Hey, how are you, ma'am?
Hi, Julie.
You, too.
Nice to see you.
Hello? Hello? Just fine. Tony, since you've seen us all, please.
Hi. How are you? Good. Doing well. We've already shook your hand, we'll shake it again.
Thank you for joining us. That was the central...
And you had your gentleman on that... She was with your agricultural director. She's got one special lead. Tell me, can you teach agriculture over there at high school?
Say that again? He teaches agriculture.
He teaches agriculture.
Harper? R. Harper? Or did you mean McCoy?
McCoy, I think.
Yep. The carpenter.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Why did Charles and Charles are up here and joining? Because of the drive that's going on at the age of your school.
I'm sorry.
I've been counting car riders, that's a bad... No, that's a hot dog right now. We're actually back to normal. We have forty more cars. We're back to normal. And I know that's a little thing, but we're a long way with teachers' kids standing out there in the east side.
That's right, traffic. A wonderful thing that's happening with us is the Mechatronics Program, which is just a new career and tech program that's happening for us at the high school. We have almost $2 million worth of equipment at this point. We've redone a couple of classrooms. When we finally get all the furniture into that space, you guys will be cordially invited to a gigantic opening. Because we're really, really excited for the community to see that. Our students are absolutely loving it and have gotten to see some of them explaining things to me firsthand, so we're really, really excited about that program.
We're partnering with Julie in the high school for the Mechatronics Program, so we have some high school credit classes offered at the middle school now that weren't available to kids prior to this year. So that's been really exciting. We also added S-Match One class for high school credit to our middle school as well. So our high school online classes are going up, so we're excited about that.
Uswood, we have the most fantastic tech program in the county. We have probably more students than ever, great activities, opportunities for students to get their homework done in the afternoons, and so we're just very blessed that we're able to serve so many of our students through wonderful before and after-school care.
I like that.
I love it this year. I have forty-two new students at Fairview. Do y'all have any idea?
I couldn't tell you the number, but we have a significant amount of new students. I would say, if I had to put a number on it, I would say around thirty at least.
I think our number's forty-five.
Just to give you an idea, the past couple of years, it's like between nine and fifteen for us, so it's certainly...
Our element, everybody's experienced more growth than we did this year, so we're expecting, and I think that's what you guys expect too, right? Families that are coming, have smaller students. So we have a little bit more transient population, unfortunately, than the other schools, but knowing that that growth is happening tells us that we're gonna hit our projections in the future.
Well, thank you for sharing. I just couldn't help myself. I know I couldn't have a spot, but I figure being such great principals, y'all would have a lot to say. And welcome to coming. It's an honor and a cheer to be able to do this. Just knowing, I know most of the citizens realize that this is a movement that started here in Fairview, and thanks to Dr. Borger and everybody, the students don't get bored, and so it's something here you can be proud of, and all of Williamson County. So it's really exciting. So it is my honor to read this proclamation. The City of Fairview Proclamation, joining the Williamson County School System, and proclaiming September is the Be Nice point, 30-point-a-month in Williamson County. Whereas Williamson County has a tradition of Southern hospitality and generosity and values the culture of kindness that was born out of the Be Nice Movement, created by Fairview High School students and staff, and adopted by the Williamson County students and staff. Whereas Williamson County can serve to be an example of what counties can inspire through individuals simply being nice, being good, and by giving where there is a need. Whereas Kenress Parents and PTO worked with the state legislature to secure a Be Nice license plate for Tennessee residents with the proceeds benefiting the Be Nice Campaign of Williamson County Schools. With pre-orders...
Being taken.
Whereas our county and the citizens' business and public servants continue their efforts at being kind and encouraging, have joined together to promote a campaign of niceness that celebrates the stories and the spirit of Williamson County and all those who live, work, and play. Now therefore, it is resolved that I, Pat Carroll, as Mayor of Fairview, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2016 as Be Nice. So, thank you so much.
What's your response?
I had a request.
Oh, I have a sign. Hang on. Hold on.
Do y'all have any information that I could...
Can you give me the information on who? Does it save some money when we extend it?
They would tickle them to that.
Yep. I would love to be there.
I know.
That would be great. And if you need, you can...
Good for you. Ten Cadillac Drive. I think I have to keep the same one I've got. Reese, did you break that?
Reese is the most mild man or best person we have in the office, always.
Good job.
You're welcome. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that. Of course.
Okay, with that being complete, we'll move on to public announcements. Do we have anything exciting going on that we need to share? No? You have a public announcement? Okay.
We'd just like to invite everyone out. We're having the annual Touch a Truck Event, October the 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the high school. It's a good opportunity for everybody to come out, get up close and personal with emergency vehicles, interact with all the public safety staff. We're planning on having mini departments there, and if we're lucky, maybe we can get a couple helicopters there, so be interesting to get everybody out, and look forward to seeing everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You put online the address, placards, mailboxes? We haven't mentioned that quite some time. Did y'all sell those for $10?
Yeah, we do still sell those. I'll check on the price.
I know it's a big hit for y'all.
It is. I'm actually looking to try to order some more signs as we speak. We've run out about two weeks ago, so I'm trying to find where they were getting those from, but we will be selling address signs and the post, and then we'll come out and put those up for you. But as soon as I get that information, I'll have it put up where everybody can see it.
Okay, anything else? Is it a home football game? Can somebody tell me? It's away?
It's out tomorrow, but right now, as we speak, the middle school homecoming.
Oh, wow. We better hurry up. Okay. Okay, well, that's even great that they were able to come join us. Okay, that will bring us to staff comments, and let's see, we'll start... Ms. Johnson, do you have anything to share?
I just wanna remind everybody to submit questions for the candidate forum that'll be held October 17th. Just submit those to me by email, or bring them, you can bring them to City Hall, any way you want to, just get those to me so we can get those questions rolling.
Great, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hall wanted me to apologize for not being here, but he's at the GNRC meeting tonight representing Fairview, and I guess first thing is I do have a PowerPoint, but we have been very busy, and I just wanna tell you, it's my goal to get you an E... Bank has had a merger, and I've had issues getting statements in a timely manner, but we've addressed that and got that taken care of, so hopefully it's gonna be to you at least five or six days beforehand in the future. That's my goal. We start off in a good light. We're ahead of projections in revenue and under-projections in expenditures, so always good report. Our revenue, now this is fiscal year-to-date, I just combined July and August, local option sales tax, thirty percent is our highest, and then state shared taxes, pretty much normal. We do get the cable TV franchise tax quarterly, and we got that in July. Our budgeted, what we budgeted for revenue for August was $295,423. Our actual was $314,24. Fiscal year-to-date, we had budgeted $650,784. We brought in $738,811. So right now, we're ahead of the game as far as where we thought we'd be, $88,027. On our expenditures, we have salaries leading the way, and then we did have our property liability and workman's comp took up eight percent of our expenditures. We do have our data processing. We always pay for our accounting software early in the year. On our budget versus actual, we are $32,970 under our budgeted expenditures, what we thought we'd be, and $46,354 for the year-to-date. And this is my favorite slide. You can kinda tell where you are all around. The first line is revenues, budget versus actual, and in the graph, revenues blue and expenditures are red, and I wanna take a little bit of time to explain the municipal revenue cycle. Most municipalities rely heavily on property taxes, so from the months from July through September, and then the months of March through June, most municipalities work in a deficit spending, and then once property taxes come in, October, November, and March are usually leveled out, and then December, January, and February, there's usually a large surplus between revenue and expenditures. The overall, if you take where we thought, where we budgeted, and where we are, we're $134,381 ahead of where we thought we'd be. That we're still working in a deficit. We're at $54,754 expenditures over revenues, but we thought we would be at $189,135 in our budget. Now, these, the fund balance is estimated based on the auditor's preliminary report. So I was hesitant to put this in, but I believe this is pretty close. Our unassigned is ballpark figure, $1,108,462. And then, of course, everybody can read down through there, but everything is separated out. We're looking forward to getting the stabilization plan and the fund balance policy fully funded this year. Any questions?
You said something about our bank. The statements are current, correct?
Yes, they're current, but they did a merger, and it's just been a timing. Yeah, I've been getting the statements later in the month than I had originally.
Now, are you saying that two banks merged, or are you saying they had an upgrade in the system?
Both. I'm thinking the First Bank and its Farmers State Bank, or something like that. I'd have to look on the statement, but they were having some issues with their systems collaborating, but I've gotten, we've gotten all that redone to, everything's done electronically now. I've gone away from the mail.
Where did you hear that they had a bank?
John Blade told me.
The bank.
Do we know what it, do we know where the deposit was?
It was probably five months ago, somewhere around there. Problem I've been having is getting them in a timely manner.
That's due to their system upgrade?
Yes.
Not the merger?
No.
Okay. Let's see, anybody else? I guess that's it for staff. Keith, is Keith here? Okay, sorry. You were hiding, so, you know. Oh, wait. Vice Mayor has something for you, Keith, if you don't mind.
Sir? What's the update on this one? We were gonna get with you to see exactly what you're looking for in that. We've done research on some stuff. Just wanna get with you on that and see...
Yes, sir, I was gonna let you, I placed some documents in, there's some mats and some coverings and some other things that are not permanent, some renderings they got from some of those, and I was gonna get with you at the expiration of this meeting to see where we, where those are temporary, and we just wanna know whether or not those will work or we do a permanent fix.
We'll get together, just want to say...
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that will take us... That will take us back to the approval of minutes, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No old business, so we'll move forward to new business. Item A was removed, so it'll move on to B, discuss and take action on security at the Fairview Historical Village. Vice Mayor setting.
The reason I put this on here is, is I've had some discussion with several people out there, Dr. Ross is one of them, and I just wanna make sure that we are working on, and I know we're doing extra rounds and everything in that area out there, with a stronger security system as far as lights go, as possible alarm system for History Village. That stuff out there is irreplaceable, and I'd like for, if you can, move forward as quickly as possible, was give us some kind of ideas of a security system for that location out there, fire and property.
Absolutely.
If I'm not mistaken, is that, all those buildings are covered in our insurance?
Correct.
Okay, but we couldn't replace them if we wanted to, but they are covered, as far as stealthy, anything like that goes.
I did, Mr. Hall did mention that today. I don't know if he was in contact with you today, but he said he's been in contact with Middleton Electric, and I'm not sure how far along.
Right, that was just for a light, outside light, and really we need at least two out there, because we wanna move log cabin down on the front side, and we're at Craig Price. So I just wanna make sure it's as secure as possible, so if we can look at it and get something back by next meeting, I appreciate it.
Understood, yes, sir.
And that's really all it was.
Okay.
I have one thing on Mr. Bill. Where are we on the sewer tap and the bathroom being put in and all of that? Please.
That's a good question. We're in the process of arranging to have the, no, that's a different matter. Let me think just a second. Robert Clark at Mid-South Heating, Refrigeration, and Plumbing has agreed to volunteer his labor for doing the plumbing, okay? The cost of, it was $6,450, has been paid to the water authority for the sewer tap, the water tap, and the grinder pump, okay? Mitch Dowdy has agreed to wire, do whatever necessary wiring is required to make the grinder pump operable at no cost, once the unit is installed. So we're waiting for things to happen. Brian Basell is coordinating this for the city and is in contact with them, and has told me, "Don't be concerned, I'm on top of this, I'm working with each of the entities." So Brian could tell you more specifically than I can, except that the expenses have been paid, we've received the donated labor, and it should not be long. We're also in the process of having the footing dug and installed for the log building that John Blade has donated to us, I believe I told you about. That would be placed beyond the clinic and the corner there, in a good place. Was that fairly okay, the way I answered you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, it's in process.
Dr. Ross, there is a timeframe on having that log cabin removed from Mr. Blade's property.
Yes, indeed. The log cabin must be removed by the first day of November, and that's all in process also. Four of us worked four or five days at the building site, removing the siding, removing an attached, non-original structure, and Craig Cropper is going to use his equipment and his men, and will be removing that structure, putting it on his flat bed, cleaning the logs, replacing two or three, and then once the foundation is finished, constructing it.
There'll be, I'm gonna be placing something on the agenda for next meeting, as far as cost factors for additions, gonna have to have the retention pond raised because of some of that right there, so that'll be included in there.
Here's my position, I'm all for preserving the historical buildings and the items that are in those buildings, but we have spent a substantial amount of money on that project, and we had a grand opening, I guess, two years ago this coming May, maybe, or June?
A year.
Well, a year just from this past...
It would be a year this summer.
A year this summer, and there's still no, it's still not open, I mean essentially. I mean, I just, I would like to see that open and accessible to the general public, and I know you would as well.
Oh, absolutely, and the reason that it hasn't been is that the plumbing hasn't been connected and the restroom connected, made operable. We cannot receive an official...
Seal.
Certificate of Occupancy until that is done. We are wanting that to happen. We are hoping that Chamber of Commerce and/or some of the park rangers can have a location in that back room during the daytime and provide tours and things of that sort.
Good.
Yes, sir. We have, the Historical Association has also raised over $150,000 in addition to what the city has provided for that, so we're very much with you in wanting to get it open. I get asked a question often, and it is embarrassing because of the delay, but when it does open, it's gonna be right, and it's gonna be, you'll be very pleased with it.
Thank you.
May I help you anymore, sir?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that'll, we'll continue with item C, discuss and take action, a bill 2016-25, and ordinance number 939.
An ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview Tennessee's budget for fiscal year 2016, as 2016 budget relocated for salaries, adultery.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor, this is two budget amendments, C and D, are very similar, that I was not aware we could even do. After speaking with the auditor, he said, "If you can give me two budget amendments, your financial statements will be squeaky clean for the state comptroller." So this is not affecting this year's budget at all, it's affecting 15, 16. So he said if he gets a first reading signed, he'll take it and run with it and get our financials in the best shape, best way to present the city to the state. So that's the reason these are on here. Basically, housekeeping, we could, we're under budget, we're fine if we send it in the way it is, but it's just a little bit neater.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
D? I'm sorry.
Yeah, discuss and take action, a bill 2016-26, ordinance number 940.
An ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview Tennessee's budget for fiscal year... year 2016, 2016 budget, debit restructure bond refunding. Mr. Doctor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Basically, in the same sense as C, pretty much what happened was all the refunding was handled on the, no monies changed hands between the city and the, all that was done through the banks and the mortgage, the lenders and Comptroller's Securities, so our books did not show any of the refunding costs. All we showed was the interest payment we paid. After he went through, those were the costs we paid. He said, you know, if you put it in the budget, it just cleans it up, or put it in your financials. So.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Sir.
First and second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item 11. City Manager, Ms. Salanias, updates.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, just a couple of items for you tonight. As an update, we still have the codes inspector position vacant. We have re-advertised for that. We did a little, we kind of expanded our reach on that advertisement. We've already gotten some feedback back from that, and we got some of those today. So we hope to have some information to you to have that position filled fairly quickly. We understand that's going to be an important position for the city long term, and we want to make sure that we take every effort and opportunity to get that right moving forward. So we hope to have that filled relatively soon. I believe it closes next week. As an update on the police department, just so you'll know, all of the matters legal that we were experienced over the last few months have been resolved. All of those employees have been returned to work, that's gone exceptionally well. I'd like to just offer a thank you to the police department. They've really put an effort in over the last few weeks to kind of figure out what we do to grow that department. It's really been a privilege to kind of work with them and see some of the attitude changes for where we've been. So you'll know, one thing that we do have, we do have one vacancy currently within the police department. We've had someone separate their employment voluntarily, no issue there, but we'll move to fill that position. So if you hear there's a vacancy within the department, that's not a departmental issue, that's just an employee who's chosen to leave the employment. Updates for the police department, so you'll know, so the public will know where we're going with that. We've spent a significant amount of time over the last couple of weeks working on our personnel assignments. We want to do some restructuring within the police department to make sure we get the most value we can out of the personnel assets that we have. We'll complete that restructuring within the next two weeks and likely be able to have you a full report for the conditioned personnel wise of the police department at your next meeting. We're also in the process of reviewing all of the assets owned by the police department. We want to make sure that we're getting the most we can from those. We're looking at those assignments and the uses of those, so we'll come back and at least get you some information, maybe not publicly, but you'll at least have some information back to you to let you know where the assets are, physical assets, and how they're being assigned. And lastly, we are working on, and we think this is very important, we're working on a full revision to the training policy for the police department. That's one area we noticed that over the last few years, managerially, that had been lacking. What you'll see in, in the training program that we have for the police department, and this will begin in January, each officer will have one day a month for training. We're going to assign Wednesdays as training days. No officers will have Wednesdays off. The Wednesdays will be everything other than Wednesdays. 25% of your department will have a full training day once a month on their Wednesday. One month may be firearms, one month may be legal update, one month may be certain seizure, one month may be hazmat, but they'll get a total of 96 hours of classroom training in the department, and we'll make sure that we do that monthly, and it's something that benefits them so we can hopefully avoid some of the legal issues and make sure that they're as prepared as they can be when they go forward. There's been a really nice buy-in from the department. You should be pleased with where you are. I'm certainly pleased from where we've been just in the last few weeks, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to fulfill those. That's going to take some budget amendment and a little bit of work, but I believe the community is certainly going to see the benefit of your effort for a top-notch police department. And we just want to thank you for the time, not only in the past, but what we'll be doing in the future. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. I will comment, I've got, I was able to join Mr. Collins at the Mobility Week for Williamson County that was put on by the chamber, and he was on stage with all the other city managers across the county and just, you know, honored to have him up there and did a great job, and I think y'all would have been proud, so I have to embarrass him and give him a little kudos, again, kind of threw him in the loop, you know, and they kind of, being there six weeks on the job, but did a great job, and thank you for doing that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item, just to bring the board up to date as to what has transpired in the last week on our existing lawsuit, Holland Paving Company versus City of Fairview and First Federal Bank. As you know, this has been around for a while. Back on May 12th of this year, I argued a motion in the Chancery Court to dismiss the complaint filed against the city for failure to state a claim upon which relief could be granted. I received, that was on May 12th, I think it was the September 7th, it might have been the 8th. I received the order from the chancellor denying that motion. That didn't make me happy, but I was not terribly disappointed because this is a type of motion that if you have reason for filing it, you need to file it. You don't want to file something that's frivolous, and this certainly was not frivolous, but it gets the idea out before the court, and it also preserves it for any future reference that you may need. This is probably the hardest type of motion to win that you'll ever file because it tests, it doesn't test any legality of a complaint or anything of this nature. You can't introduce any extraneous evidence, no affidavits or anything of that nature. It strictly tests the sufficiency of the complaint. It says that, that the plaintiff, in this case Holland, failed to state a claim upon which relief could be granted, and one of the assumptions, and it's hard to overcome, is that the court must take every presumption that the plaintiff claims as being absolutely true, then and only then, if that's the case, then your motion will be granted. Now, we'll say, my research is, in this state, somewhere between 7 and 10% of those are granted. Very seldom are they granted, but I think they're very important. And the, the failure to state a claim, basically, in everyday language is that if, if you write down something that you say somebody did that they shouldn't have done, and you ask for some, some award, whether it be, don't do this, don't do that, or give me money, then you basically have stated a claim upon which relief could be granted, and that's the reason they're very seldom are granted. I wanted you to know that, though, that we have preserved that. This is in the very early stages of proceedings in this case, and I will be back with the board as things go on to keep you advised. Just wanted to put that out there so you know where we are.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Basell. Okay, Commissioner Crutcher.
President, thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Johnson.
Good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Just a couple of things. City Manager, if we can, I'll add it to next agenda, have an update on our impact fees? The impact fee study that we allotted the money for?
Yes, sir.
And get a timeframe on that. As you know, I think the county's looking at moving forward with the possibility of a educational impact fee of a very significant amount of money. And I just want, we've been working on it for a couple of years now, and I want to make sure that we get our study complete so that they'll know how this is going to impact them at the same time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you did a good job on the ads for the codes department and the fire reserve officer in the TML magazine, I don't know if y'all read that or not, but it was two Real Lines ads that was in it, so you'd be attracted to it. The Be Nice tags, Mayor, you helped me on this, they have to have a thousand pre-ordered before they'll go ahead and start printing them.
I'm not sure.
I'm pretty sure that's what it is. I want to check online and see what it is, but that would be great because I think, if I order one, I can ask for $25 of that, am I right? I believe it's $25 of that money because it's $80 something dollar tag, go ahead.
You can designate it to the school of your choice.
Exactly, that's what I was trying to say. I'll be able to designate to middle school, high school, whoever I want to designate, so it'll be a big help for them. So just, just take a look at it online, you can look for the tags, Tennessee Department of Transportation on it, and they'll give you all the information you need. So take a look at it. It's something really big, it's national now, so. Also, I'll be adding to agenda next week, some of the things Dr. Rice discussed at next meeting. Dr. Rice discussed some of what they need to do to finish it up out there. Part of it has been, like I said, getting the CO on it, getting the plumbing done on it that we, when we approved the bathrooms on it, and getting Dixon Water Authority to complete it. I think it can be finished up in short term. Shannon, I've got some stuff that I'm looking at next meeting, but I'll go ahead and send it to you so you have a better idea, make sure everybody's got it, and you too. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to just clarify for Mr. Hall, the GNRC, he actually is the cap, appointed by Mayor Anderson in that seat, and of course, obviously, I'd never get to go to that because it's a meeting, but glad to have him representing us. And a lot of great things going on in the county. It was a great meeting today and just really working with the rest of the county and the mayors, trying to, you know, we know that the concerns of traffic is on everybody's mind, and we're trying to do some partnerships and just moving us forward. So anyway, we're out there working it, we're talking about it all across the county, we're having the same issues. It may be different for us, but traffic is definitely conversation. So anyway, with that being said, have a great night, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.